I wish to also express appreciation on behalf of the Senate to the presiding judge and of course, the judiciary for allowing us to use the Senate session to order. This is the third day, third regular session. Today's Thursday, March 10, 2022. At approximately, we're at 1:43 PM here in the Tinian courthouse, San Jose Village. And before we proceed, I would like to offer a moment of time of silent prayer, but before doing that, I wish to ask the members to include in your prayers the victims of the wars in Europe, in Eastern Europe, and we hope for an amicable solution to end the conflict. We pray for all the victims. We pray for all the leaders to come to terms with their differences. I also take a moment of silence to recognize a gentleman in our community of Tinian who recently passed, a former chairman of the commission, Tinian Commission Martin de Longo Rosanicolas and their families or the law. He passed away yesterday morning. He also served in the government as well as the chairman for CDA for a number of years. So please stand for a moment of silence. Alokinazombi, ta inklusugi tinazotata duwi, i membroon i kamanitata ni ma SSB, United States Armed Forces, especially those that are potentially going to be called upon to the call of duty. Thank you. So with that, I recognize the clerk to please call the roll.
Senator Cruz? Senator De Longo Guerrero?
Yes.
Senator Hoku? Mr. President?
Yes.
Senator King Neighbors? Senator Manglonia? Again. Senator Kirua? Senator Sablon?
Yes.
Senator Santos?
Here.
Mr. President, all nine members are present.
With nine members present, we have quorum to proceed on with our order of business today's session and let the record reflect that on Rule 4, Section 2 of our Senate rules, it allows for the members of this body's organization to appear via electronic attendance, provided so that they are physically present here in the CNMI and for this for this session, Senators Manglonia, De Longo Guerrero, and Santos are appearing before this platform. So at this time, before I proceed on to the next order of business, the chair recognizes the floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President, and at this time, I'd like to offer a motion to suspend Rule 3, Section 3 of the official rules of the Senate and in compliance with the Open Government Act to amend today's agenda. This motion to suspend the official rules of the Senate is to accept any communications that may have been posted after the call in accordance with the Opening Government Act, and this is in reference to Senate Communication Number 22-111 and Senate Communication 22-112. So moved, Mr. President.
It's a motion offered for the suspension of rules to amend today's order of business offered by the floor leader. Do I hear a second to the motion? Second discussion? Ready? For the suspension of rules, clerk, please call the roll for the approval.
Senator Cruz? Senator De Longo Guerrero? Senator De Longo Guerrero?
Yes.
Senator Hoku? Senator King Neighbors? Senator Manglonia?
Yes.
Senator Kirua? Senator Sablon?
Again.
Senator Santos?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Again.
Mr. President, all nine members, voting yes.
With nine members voting yes, the motion for the request to amend today's order of business here by approved. Floor leader, you still have the floor? Okay. With that, I wish to proceed on to Item B under Public Comment. This is the portion of our meeting today to allow members of the public to comment on any of the items in today's order of business. Again, any of the items in today's order of business. And I see our hardworking mayor just joined us. Mr. Mayor, please we give you the first dibs and, sir, kindly reference your name for the record. Thank you.
Thank you and good afternoon, everyone. I'd like again to express my appreciation for coming on to Tinian and having this session conducted on Tinian. It's always good to have inputs from our community which have a hard time to get up to Saipan and attend your very, very busy and active sessions that you have in Saipan. Again, thank you for coming on. I'm here to testify and I was just going through the order of business and the agenda. Excuse me if I don't see it in there, but I just wanted to to express my views on one particular view. I think it's referred to the Senate, but this is in regards to the pension that is being loaned away for the pensioners, the bonus. Mr. President and members of this august body, I am in full support of CNMI legislature providing CNMI retirees a 1,000 bonus, and I hope that the House and the Senate can soon agree on a method to fund the bonuses so that our retirees can receive their much-needed financial assistance. However, it is also my understanding that the House intends to fund the bonuses from the hotel occupancy taxes allocated to the municipalities to MVA. According to Hanmi, the hotel occupancy rate in February 2022 was only 24%, providing a significant reduction of hard funds received prior to COVID. Please note that these funds are the only funds available to promote and revitalize our tourism industry on Tinian. Moreover, these funds are used to fund an annual, the annual festivals and for the maintenance of our public beaches and tour sites. These are a grave concern to our municipality. As you know, we have committed and continue to make sure that we maintain these beaches. We're talking about cleaning the toilets, make sure they pick up on the trash, pick up the trash in the morning, in the evening, morning, in the evening to clean up the toilets and the maintenance of the grounds. If they continue to insist that hard funds will be taken away from MVA, so they will drastically affect the municipality. I heavily rely on this funding to source out some of the sites that are on Tinian. You go to our sites, I, as you may see, that it is well-maintained. I also continue to provide power and water, build new facilities, toilet areas and showerheads for our guests. Tinian now has really developed as one of the places to see in the CNMI. People come down here. We are very minimum on art. Our rooms, we have probably an inventory to now 68 to 70 rooms. It's a challenge, but a lot of our tourists take advantage of the scenery and cleanliness of these parks and beaches. If the house version continues to be the route for the legislature to take, it will really impact our municipality. So I urge the Senate, I urge the Senate to reject the House intent to use hard funds and identify an alternative funding source for the retiree bonuses so I can continue to promote, rebuild, and enhance Tinian's tourism industry. Again, I thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and testify. This is an issue that is of great concern to my administration and the municipality of Tinian. Thank you again and good afternoon.
Asusmasia, Mayor O'Donnell. The floor is still open for any member of the public to present testimony on items on the order today's agenda or order of business. Okay, thank you. We don't think further on public comment. Before item C, I would like to call for a short recess. Or ordinary session and this time I would like to move on to Item D under messages from the governor. Clerk?
We have nine, Mr. President, on our agenda, 22164 to 172.
Any comments? Okay, the chair recognizes Senator Pomanglonia.
I would like to comment on the governor's B2 of Senate Local Bill 2206. 2206, Mr. President and members, pertains to the ROTA Casino compensation for the commissioners. And basically, stating that when there is an active casino in operation, the members of the commission shall be each compensated at the rate of $60,000 per year. When there's no active casino, the members shall be compensated in accordance with 1CMC subsection 8247, which basically, I guess, is the same provision that they authorized other autonomous agencies in the CNMI that are not getting salary, but rather compensation for meeting. And I know the governor in his two message mention that that he is concerned with an item that the Attorney General raised. However, I believe the Attorney General raised that only because there's some concern, but I don't think to the extent that it calls for the B2 of this legislation. So I hope that the Oliver Council can rewrap this to address that, but I think that as far as our government is concerned, I believe there's more problem than not amending it and continuing to meet this obligation of $60,000 a year when we have seen that ROTA has no casino in operation since it was established and no full-fledged casino operation and the concern about compensating them if we pass this on a part-time basis is much less than the concern that we have today in accumulating non-payment of compensation. So I just want to put it out that this is very alarming as far as the situation of continuing to pay the commissioners $60,000 a year for no casino. Thank you.
Asusmasia, Senator Manglonia. Any other member who'd like to comment on governor's message? Recognize Senator Teresita Santos.
Thank you, Mr. President, and before I go into making my comments, I'd like to express our congratulations to the people on the island of Tinian for your celebration of another year of your PICA festival. And so now I would like to echo Senator Manglonia's concerns in regards to governor's message number 22169, the B2 to Senate Local Bill number 2206 for our Senate Eagle Council to further review the AG's concerns regarding the implementation of the payment restrictions that may be reasons for dispute with the commission members and for the author, Senator Manglonia, to introduce for our action. Thank you, Mr. President.
Asusmasia, Senator Santos. On Item E, communications from judiciary?
None, Mr. President.
Communications from the heads of executive department?
We have two, 2235 from OPM, 2236 from Department of Finance.
Any comments from the members? Recognize Senator Manglonia.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I see under Department Communication 22-36 the letter from the Department of Finance with regards to the establishment of a separate business unit to support the payment of the retiree bonuses, and I would like to make a short comment. I also see, Mr. President, that the Senate has refiled Senate Joint Resolution 2209 today, and so I just want to say that I have to totally agree with House Speaker Edmond G. Gomez that even if it was proper to build a business unit, I thought via a Senate resolution, absent any funding in that business unit, nothing can be reprogrammed into it. A business unit is just that, a business unit that is inactive, end quote. If we do not agree with the House of Representatives, and I remind us all that our constitution is very clear that the House of Representatives is invested with the particular power of the purse, why are we very reluctant to appoint three joint conference members from the Senate? Why do we choose now to make this without two bonuses, a constitutional legal argument or debate between the Senate and the House? Why argue now the difference between a Senate resolution and a House bill? Why don't we just keep it on the path of working on House Bill 291, which we had amended? The House had rejected the 100% reprogramming amendment also and further to identify the total 2.6 million necessary to reprogram for this bonus. And including in the discussion, the issues raised by our good mayor, Mayor O'Donnell, today when he testified earlier, our constitution provides for a joint conference to resolve our differences. I sincerely believe that the House, what they did was reasonable, justifiable, and feasible. So as we have always done in the past, let's sit down with them and I'm sure we can immediately agree if the general intent is to assist all our retirees. I'm just concerned that after two failed attempts to create an unfunded business unit for the retiree bonuses promised in December, prefiled Senate Joint Resolution 2209 before us to grant the governor's request to reprogram $2.6 million is destined for failure yet again because the legislation contains the same federal laws that its predecessor's unfunded business unit. Even with the removal of the 100% reprogramming language, the fact that the governor will restore these 2.6 million back to the general fund without any legislative guidance or constraints as to where they will go, it is in effect giving him 2.6 million at his sole discretion. And my question is, why is it that we in the legislature continue to give away our power of service? So I just asked the members to please reconsider. I'm going to vote for that Senate Joint Resolution with reservation because I know that's not going to get us anywhere, but I respectfully apologize to Mr. President and the members, Senate leadership. But what is of concern, you know, the MVA, you know, I think that the House the name is the tourism in the December may determine the for the Thank you for the opportunity.
Asusmasia, Senator Manglonia. Any member? Ready? Under Communications from the House?
We have four, Mr. President, 2283 to 86.
Any comments from the members? Communications from the Senate?
We have seven, 22106 to 112.
Comments, members? Communications from Washington delegate?
None, Mr. President.
Unfinished business?
None.
Prefiled bills, initiatives, local bills, and resolutions. This time I recognize Senator Teresita Santos.
Thank you, Mr. President, and so introducing Senate Resolution Number 22-19 to congratulate and honor all the women in the Commonwealth as we celebrate their contributions and achievements during the month of March 2022, proclaimed as CNMI Women's Month and March 8 as International Women's Day. And if there's no objection by the members, this Senate Resolution is introduced as committee of the whole and would like to make a motion to place this Senate Resolution on the resolution calendar for today's adoption. So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Santos. Floor leader, if there's no objection from the members, the chair would like to place the Resolution 2219 on today's resolution calendar. Any other? Senator Santos?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is introducing Senate Initiative Number 22-11 to propose a constitutional amendment to Article 2, Section 8 of the NMI Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Santos. And the chair has one, formally introducing Senate Joint Resolution Number 2209 approving the governor's request to create a new program and business unit for the retiree bonuses to reprogram $2.6 million from within the executive branch for the payment of retirees of $1,000 bonuses. And with that, I ask the floor leader to place it in today's resolution calendar as well. Introduction of bills, initiative, local bills, and resolutions. Reports of standing committees? Clerk?
Me.
Floor leader, can you please offer a motion for the adoption of Committee Report Number 2267?
Thank you, Mr. President, and under Item M on our agenda, reports of standing committees. We have one standing committee and that's Standing Committee Report Number 22-67 from your Executive Appointments and Government Investigations Committee reporting on the addendum to Standing Committee Report Number 22-63 and 22-64, adopted on February 3, 2022. The attachments are provided. Mr. President and members, I move for its adoption.
There's a motion offered by the floor leader for the adoption of Standing Committee Report Number 22-67, reporting from the Executive Appointment of Government Investigation. And at this time, with a discussion? Any discussion? Ready? All those in favor of the motion to adopt the recognize Senator Edith de Longo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just thought I'd bring something to the attention of the committee report, 2263. I believe it's also mentioned on the other committee report for the other MPT Board of Trustees. I stand to be corrected, but I believe the amount of U2 loan is not 5-0, it's not 50 million. I believe it's 15 million.
It's stated in the committee report, Senator?
That it's corrected to the right amount?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion for the adoption of Standing Committee Report 2267, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Standing Committee Report Number 2267 adopted. Reports of special conference committee report. Clerk?
None, Mr. President.
Resolution calendar?
Okay.
Ready? Floor leader?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a couple of resolutions on today's resolution calendar. The first resolution is Senate Resolution Number 22-19. This is a Senate Resolution to congratulate and honor all the women in this Commonwealth as we celebrate their contributions and achievements during the month of March 2022, proclaimed as CNMI Women's Month and March 8 as International Women's Day. Mr. President and members, I move for its adoption.
There's been a motion offered by the floor leader for the adoption of Senate Joint Resolution 22-19, and it's been seconded. Discussion?
Ready.
Ready? The chair, before I call for adoption? The chair, before I call for adoption, I would like to just say a couple of words that we do appreciate the standings and the presence and the existence of women around the world, polarizing it down to this Senate chamber, where we see a lot of esteemed and very successful professional women in there, both in the legislature and, of course, in the gallery. Some retirees and some attorneys who are making a significant contribution in our community, as well as, of course, our two Senate members in this legislature. So with that, all those in favor of the motion for the adoption of Senate Joint Resolution twenty-two dash one nine, please say aye. All those opposed? Senate Resolution, okay. I stand corrected. Thank you, clerk, for correcting me. It's Senate Resolution twenty-two dash one nine, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Senate Resolution twenty-two dash one nine, hereby adopted. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next resolution on today's Resolution calendar is Senate Joint Resolution number twenty-two dash zero-nine. A Senate Joint Resolution approving the governor's request to create a new program and business unit for retiree bonuses and to reprogram two point six million dollars from within the executive branch for the payment of the retirees' one thousand dollar bonuses. Mr. President and members, I move for its adoption.
With motion offered for the adoption of Senate Joint Resolution twenty-two dash zero-nine, do I hear a second? And without any objection from the members, I would like to ask, now that we dissolve into committee of the whole, as we do have the Secretary of Finance here in the Senate Chamber or in the Senate session, to help guide us and articulate the exercise that we've been playing, not playing, but we've been at odds with our co-members of the legislature in the matter of the vehicle that we need to dispose of this very important bonus for the retirees. So we have here Secretary of Finance, and for the legal aspect of the concerns raised by some of us in the legislature, I am going to ask the legal counsel to guide us accordingly. So with that, floor leader, please offer a motion to dissolve into committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this time, I offer a motion that we dissolve into committee as a whole.
The floor leader is offering a motion to dissolve into committee of the whole. Do I hear a second? All those in favor to dissolve into committee of the whole, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Floor leader, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to the members and the viewing public and everyone in the gallery as we dissolve or we have dissolved into the committee as a whole. And according to Senate rule, when we dissolve into committee of the whole, the floor leader now holds the floor until we rise back into our plenary session. As stated by the Senate President, we are dissolving to give a chance to our Secretary of Finance to give comments and guidance on the said Resolution, Senate Joint Resolution number twenty-two dash zero-nine, as there are some concerns by some of the legislative members that we heard comments from earlier. And in addition to the Secretary of Finance, we do have our Senate Legal Counsel, Council Antonin Villagomez, who will chime in on any legal aspects of getting the Senate Joint Resolution number twenty-two dash zero-nine adopted. So at this moment, the floor is open, and I will give the floor to the Secretary of Finance for his comments and guidance. Thank you.
Thank you, floor leader and members of the Senate. I come before you to share and answer questions that the senators you may have in regards to communications from the governor and my office in regards to the request for a joint legislative resolution to establish a business unit and account for the retiree bonuses, and in the same resolution to authorize reprogramming into the new business unit. Based on communications with the attorneys general, that is the direction that the governor's office and I have charted towards requesting to get this bonus paid to the retirees, we ask for a joint resolution to resolve it. We use the planning, the one CMC, Section seventy-two oh four, reprogramming authority. In Section D, it calls for other reprogramming, that the governor can, may request the legislature for authority to reprogram funds and is authorized, I mean, and these requests must be in writing, and such requests shall be subject to approval of a joint resolution. We understand that there is no business unit for the retiree bonuses using general fund funding, and therefore, that's hence the request from the governor utilizing Section D of other reprogramming requests out of pursuant to one CMC, Section seven-two oh four. And we've also been getting, communicating with the Senate Legal Counsel, as well as the Attorney General and the governor's legal representative. And therefore, we sit here today, back to another resolution. The first resolution, I felt, would have resolved the issue, and we could have had these bonuses paid before Christmas. We are here sitting in the middle, almost in the middle of March, and we still haven't resolved this. I understand where the House and their reprogramming bill, the governor's office and myself were not requesting for any additional funding into the general fund, so we're not asking to increase the general fund budget, and we are also not requesting for a reprogramming appropriation bill. We feel that within the twenty-five percent reprogramming authority the governor has, the funds originally at one point three million dollars was way under the twenty-five percent, including now, where we stand, an additional five hundred to make the bonus a thousand dollars is still within the twenty-five percent budget level that the governor has authorization to do so. We just need the resolution to create the business unit to allow us to reprogram into. It's not enough to just create a business unit. We need the legislation, the joint resolution to include authority to reprogram into the unfunded or new business unit, which Section D, under the one CMC, seventy-two oh four, Section D states how that could be accomplished. I'm ready to answer any questions the Senate has, the committee has.
The floor is now open. I recognize Senator Hoku.
Secretary, you make mention about the reprogramming authority that the governor can exercise in doing so. So I understand that under the, in any election year, the governor is given only twenty-five percent as authorized on the Planning and Budget Act. Now, with this percentage of authority for reprogramming, how much have been reprogrammed under that direction using the Planning and Budget Act for twenty-five percent?
At this point, we have not reprogrammed anything within the executive branch.
So it is clear that that funding can be done by the governor using that twenty-five percent, not more than twenty-five percent for your programming authority under this fiscal year?
That's correct.
So in doing so, if the governor is going to exercise that twenty-five percent reprogramming, then the Secretary of Finance need the joint consent by both houses to provide you increasing business unit for the purpose of putting funds in that account, in that business section, under the, coming from the twenty-five percent reprogramming authority under the Planning and Budget Act?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Secretary.
The floor is still open for any questions to the Secretary of Finance, as well as to our Legal Counsel Antonin Villagomez, by the members.
Counsel?
Okay, recognize Senator Edith de Longo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question for the Secretary of Finance. Thank you for asking that the government has not reprogrammed any money yet under the current budget act within its twenty-five percent authority. My question to you, what is the exact total amount of that twenty-five percent reprogramming authority, considering that we are looking at two point six million dollars to reprogram for the retirees' one thousand bonus?
Thank you, Senator Guerrero. I do not have the exact figure, but an assumption of fifty million dollars is just the executive branch. Twenty-five percent of fifty million is?
Twenty-five million?
No, that's fifty percent. So you got twelve point five million that we can reprogram, assuming a fifty million dollar executive branch budget. The total budget for the CNMI government, you know, at a hundred and forty-four million dollars, granted, you know, we have about forty-five billion of that is debt, but at a hundred million dollars, twenty-five million dollars of reprogramming authority the governor has, assuming that a hundred million is just an executive branch, but cutting that in half, two point six million dollars is way within the twenty-five percent.
Senator Guerrero, you have the floor.
Thank you. Secretary of Finance, can you also share with the Senate body, what is the total head count of retirees that are anticipating the retiree bonus of a thousand dollars?
It's about thirteen hundred retirees. I can pick up the exact number. Just give me a few minutes, I can recall it in the email, but we're looking around thirteen hundred.
I'm not sure that's coming in clear, but if I may share some data with the Senate committee, I did an inquiry with the Settlement Fund Office, and the total head count for the entire CNMI number of retirees that would benefit from this bonus is two thousand five hundred sixty-eight, and the greater majority of that is from eighty-three percent of the island of Saikan, which is two thousand one hundred thirty-one, eleven percent from the island of Rota, a total of two hundred eighty-two heads, then about six percent of a hundred fifty-four individuals on the African Union. That is the latest count that I received sometime as of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. So I just want to share that information with the entire Senate. Thank you. Mr. President, if I may be recognized?
One moment, Senator Santos.
Thank you.
So noted, set on those numbers?
Yes, I stand to be corrected. I just pulled it up as of March fifth, in anticipation of the March fifteenth. Total retirees we have is twenty-six oh two. Yeah, thank you, Senator Guerrero, and if you had that information earlier, it would have been appreciated to share that instead of asking me to try to pull it up. Thank you.
Recognize Senator Santos.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Secretary, thank you for appearing before us to enlighten the Senate with regards to Senate Resolution number twenty-two dash zero-nine. I only have one question, and you can answer this question with a yes or no. With the information that you just shared to the Senate, may I ask if that same information has also been shared with the House of Representatives?
If I shared information with the House of Representatives, the original intent and the original letter requesting for reprogramming, the joint resolution was shared with both houses. That's correct. My latest letter was a response to the Senate President's inquiry, so therefore, I did not respond and give to the House.
So the information that you just shared to the Senate this afternoon has not been shared with the House of Representatives?
I will repeat, I responded to an inquiry to the Senate President. Therefore, it wasn't a letter to both presiding officers. So the answer to that would be no, but the House has the same information.
The same information that you just shared with us this afternoon?
That's correct. I did not change my point of view and my letter from the original intent or the governor's letter and my current letter. There's no difference. It's just clarification on our point of view and where we stand as an administration, that we can stay within the twenty-five percent reprogramming authority for the governor that the governor has.
Okay.
Thank you.
So may we, okay, so may we know why you did not respond to the presiding officer of the House?
I'll repeat again, I responded to the Senate President as an inquiry, inquiry from the Senate President. It was not a, it was an email from my office to the Senate President and the Senate. I was not, the letter from the governor was to both presiding officers. The information I wrote in my letter that you have a copy of hasn't, doesn't say any different from what the governor's request was. It clarified that we can stay within the twenty-five limit with the increase up to a thousand dollars retirement bonus.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Secretary. Are you for now? Thank you.
Okay, recognize Senator Cruz. And then Senator Hoku. Senator Cruz.
Thank you, floor leader, Mr. Secretary. Just to clarify on a understatement you mentioned earlier, the reprogramming, the twenty-five percent programming authority of the governor, that two point six can be addressed on that reprogramming authority?
That's correct.
So we don't need any new appropriation funding for this matter?
No doubt.
Because I'm very concerned of the House intent to use the MBI hot fund, and with that intent, it will jeopardize or hamper the municipality programs and operation in regards to that funding. That's what the mayor mentioned earlier, taking that away from the municipality, not only ten years, but all the municipalities that are receiving from the hot fund. We don't need new appropriation to address this two point six.
That's correct, Senator.
So it's just, just creating, creating a new unit is not, is not setting a appropriation, no, a new appropriation fund. Is that correct?
In my opinion, creating a business unit is not a new appropriation. Giving the authority, giving the governor the authority to reprogram into a unfunded business unit needs joint legislative resolution.
So I remember in the beginning when the trustee of law refused to accept bonuses, if not given both or receive the, both houses' joint resolution to approve the funding source for retirees, and I believe the Attorney General agreed to that rule. Is that correct?
That is correct. Our, the original letter the governor submitted in mid-December was with guidance from the Attorney General's office.
So we don't need new appropriation to address the two point six?
No, no, sir. We just need the authority to reprogram and allow the governor and the executive branch to reprogram from several business units or departments and agencies where we see fit and without jeopardizing any operations of the government.
And again, I know the Chairman Hoku mentioned about the twenty-five percent budget law, that it will only allow twenty-five percent to be utilized on every elective issues that have the potential to already on an election year. So if that's the concern about the hundred percent programming, the law is there that you cannot touch no more than twenty-five percent. So I think that will not no, address. So I think that will not address the concern of why is given 100%? They can always go back, and that's the protection of the funds. Because we cannot use more than 25% of what is stated in the law. That's...
Thank you, Senator. And we are within, way below our 25% amount.
Thank you, thank you, Floor Leader.
Recognize Senator Hoco.
Yeah, Mr. Secretary, we're only talking here the figure amount for the retirees. And that's about 2,000 plus, no?
We analyzed it to be about 2,600 retirees, you know, times $1,000, 2.6 million.
So what I'm trying to leave, in addition to the retirees, is what about the spouses that are benefiting from the retirees?
The 2602 figure includes dependents or those that are receiving retirement for their, under the benefits, under the settlement fund.
Okay, I just want to make sure that those individuals beneficiaries will not be left aside, right? If we're only thinking about the actual retirees and not to consider or put into account the beneficiaries of those retirees that are, whether they are still alive or have passed away. So using the 25% reprogramming under the Planning and Budget Act will definitely be sufficient to address both the retirees and the beneficiaries of each retiree.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to, members, we're going to take two more. And now I recognize Senator Manglona.
Privilege, the Chairman.
You recognize Senator Manglona. I give you the floor.
Good, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Secretary. Secretary, can I ask you, should the House accept the resolution? We're very much, and you went ahead and reprogrammed $2.6 million for the retiree bonus. And then the next day come back and backfill this $2.6 million. Would it be correct to say that when you return the $2.6 million, it doesn't necessarily mean that it would go to all the business units, the various business units that are reprogrammed to the retiree bonus?
Can you clarify your question, or let me ask this? Are you asking that is the administration going to backfill the $2.6 million from the areas we took? Or are we going to move?
You don't need to, let me just narrow my statement, and you can comment later, because I don't want to be not allowed to complete my points that I want to raise to you, and you can answer today or at a later time. But I just want to say that if you had listened earlier, I made a statement that even with the removal of the 100% reprogramming language, the fact that the governor will restore this $2.6 million back to the general fund without any legislative guidance or constraints, and where they will go, this is in effect giving the governor $2.6 million at his soul this question. I just want to say that. But let me go to the original discussion about the legal opinion. And again, I quoted earlier Speaker Edmund Villagomez, wherein he said, "Even if it was proper to create a business unit via Senate resolution, absent any funding in that business unit, nothing can be reprogrammed into it." And this is what we are talking and arguing legally, and it doesn't matter what our legal counsel say, and it doesn't matter what the House Legal Counsel could say. The only opinion that will matter is that opinion which both of the legal counsel can agree on. And it is for that reason that I say this will be a third failed attempt to create this unfunded business unit and ultimately to give our retirees their $1,000 check. And so we can talk here and legal opinion after legal opinion, but the only opinion that will matter is what both consuls can agree on. And I again say that this discussion should be taking place between our three purries and the three house conferies, so that they can agree. I don't care if it's a resolution or not, or a bill or not, but I believe that the House was very reasonable when in their opinion. And after all, our constitution again invests in them the significant power of the purse. And they just want to see what is going to be reprogrammed. They support the $1,000. They want to do it the right way. Because for me too personally, I do not agree that you can amend a business unit and put in $1 million or even $1,000 via a resolution. If that's the case, then any governor in the future can build a hospital in Pagan without legislative appropriation.
Senator Polis, try to wrap up, please.
Because they can just simply by resolution, build a hospital anywhere they want, with a properly passed legislation, properly appropriating money. You know what? Sido's masi.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to give the floor to the Senate President before we rise back.
Thank you, Floor Leader, and thank you, members. And thank you, Secretary. And especially the retirees, no? Thanks for joining us. And again, just going back to the discussion, and I'm listening to, based on your presentation, Secretary, and your letter back predates today, even in December, you've cross-checked with an attorney who is the receiver right now at the settlement fund?
That's correct.
Okay, and also the AG?
The AG, the settlement fund has required for us to get the AG's opinion and authority.
So AG is not in any... Again, since the Senate joint resolution from the Senate?
Any general recommendation?
Okay, Counsel Villagomez, do we have any concern on the legal aspect of... Because it appears that I, okay, I don't have it with me, but in the beginning, back in December, there was a subject question by some of our members of the legislature saying that it may be not permissible to originate from the Senate, because it has to be a House joint resolution. But moving on to today, I guide my decisions based on the guidance of the Legal Counsel. So just for consistency purposes, I would like to allow, see, Antoni, to allow the members who are here today, the member of our community that are on live stream, so that there's an understanding, no, of what the exercise is all about and how important it is for the legislature to come to grips and finally adopt the joint resolution. Counsel, can you please refer to that particular items that I just mentioned?
Yes, Mr. President, you did ask for legal opinion to answer the question whether or not the Senate is authorized to introduce this Senate joint resolution to authorize the request of the governor. And it is true that the House basically carries the purse of the CNMI government. They all appropriation bills, the Constitution. Article 2, Section 5 of the Constitution is clear that appropriation and revenue bills may be introduced only in the House of Representatives. That already happened when the House introduced the current fiscal year budget and passed it, and then the Senate also passed it, and it became law. So we already have a budget that has been approved by the legislature and signed into law. Now, the Constitution says, again, if you look at the resolution on page 2, line 14, I put in here, it says, "In my Constitution, Article 3, Section 9 provides that if a balanced budget is approved by the legislature, the governor may not reallocate appropriated funds except as provided by law." So the governor, once we have a budget, he cannot reprogram the funds except as provided by law. The law that, we have a law that's the Planning and Budgeting Act, and that controls how the governor, or that authorizes the governor to reprogram funds. So under Section 1 CMC 7402, that's a section of the Planning and Budgeting Act that authorizes the governor to reprogram up to 25% of the budget of the executive branch of any fiscal year. So that's what he has. So once we have a budget, the governor can move around monies without the approval of the legislature up to 25% of his, of the executive branch budget. Now, the same section, 1 CMC 7402D, authorizes other reprogramming. So if the governor needs reprogramming that is not authorized by the 25% or in excess of the 25%, he can still make a request pursuant to 7402D, subsection D. That's the trigger here. That's the trigger. And it says here that the governor may request the legislature for authority to reprogram funds other than such reprogramming as is authorized by subsections A, B, and C. B is the 25% authorization for the government and C of the governor. And C is the 10% reprogramming authority of the agencies. So if the governor's request doesn't fit into A, B, C, and D, he has the subsection D of other programming. So he can make his request pursuant to subsection D, which he did in this case in his letter in mid-December. He transmitted a letter to both houses of the legislature requesting for approval to create a new business unit for the retiree bonus and to authorize the reprogramming of funds within the executive branch to fund that business unit. So based on the Constitution, Article 3, Section 9, and the Planning and Budgeting Act 1 CMC 7402, that basically gives the governor that authority. Now, the vehicle, it says clearly here that the vehicle for the governor's request to reprogram shall be subject to approval by joint resolution. It doesn't say House joint resolution, it doesn't say Senate joint resolution. So arguably, the Senate can introduce a joint resolution or the House can introduce a resolution to accommodate the governor's request. It's important to note that although it doesn't specify which joint resolution, in the Planning and Budgeting Act, it does provide for a House concurrent resolution. It defines what is a House concurrent resolution, and the definition clearly states that a House joint resolution has to originate in the House. So in that case, it's clear the Senate can never introduce a House joint resolution, because in the Planning and Budgeting Act, it clearly defines it as a concurrent resolution, sorry, a House concurrent resolution that originates in the House. But in the case of reprogramming, it just says joint resolution. So arguably, the Senate or the House may introduce it. So that was, and that was also the, based on the governor's communication, that is also what the Attorney General advised and the, I believe, the settlement administrator. So based on the Constitution and the Planning and Budgeting Act and the Attorney General's advice to the secretary and the governor, we proceeded to draft the Senate joint resolution and introduce it in the Senate. So, and then also, just to support the Senate's introduction of a joint resolution in this case, in the past, the Senate had previously, on page 3, line 5, adopted, introduced Senate Joint Resolution 1904 on September 24, 2015, and adopted it the next day. And then the House went ahead and adopted Senate Joint 1904. Senate Joint Resolution 1904 authorized the governor to program funds in excess of the limits pursuant to 1 CMC 7402. So that, again, 1 CMC 7402 only authorized 25%. The governor submitted a letter to both presiding officers requesting for approval to reprogram funds within its branch, but in excess of 25%. So it's not additional appropriation. It's not reprogramming from the executive branch or taking from the executive, or sorry, from any branch or any other business unit. It was just reprogramming in excess of the 25% within the executive branch. So it's, I think we do have precedence in that Senate Joint Resolution 1904, that the Senate does have authority to introduce a joint resolution entertaining the governor's request for reprogramming under 1 CMC 7204D. And that's basically my opinion to you that I had drafted.
Thank you, Legal Counsel. Secretary, I wanted to kind of circle back again with the, what's our projected revenue for FY 2022?
2022, our current. We passed the budget of $144 million. In FY 2021, I reported that we generated $148. We kept the same levels of FY 21. We anticipate to match or go above the collections of 2021 at $148. So I'm anticipating, but until the end of March and my second quarter report will have better figures to nail down a year in.
So of that, Secretary, and by the way, despite all the challenges, we see a black instead of a red in your collection. So that's always a good thing, coming from your department and from the entity of the government. But is the Contugi executive branch right now? And I apologize, I don't have the numbers in front of me. What is the allocation for the executive branch only?
I apologize myself.
And then when I say executive branch, the Governor's Office, Lieutenant Governor's Office, and all the line agencies, correct?
Correct, the executive branch.
So maybe about $50 million, maybe $60 million perhaps?
I would assume so. The legislative branch and the judicial branch are the other two branches.
Okay, so let's say $60 million at 10%. That's $6 million, right?
That's correct.
So you only need more or less than, less than 10% of that to allocate?
It's within the 25%.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Secretary. And I know you back to the floor to go back to sessions. I do want to say some more during when we rise back. Are you back, floor leader? Thank you, and let's rise back into session.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Secretary and Legal Counsel. I now rise back into our plenary session and yield the floor back to the President.
Thank you, Floor Leader. Thank you, members, and thank you, Secretary Atalik and Counsel for the guidance again. Again, back to under discussion, the main motion. Any other member before we take a vote? Senator, okay, recognize Senator Manglona.
I just wanted to ask our Legal Counsel under the media of the whole, but nonetheless, I just want to ask her, I was going to ask her, I know that she said there was a precedent on in 2015, but I know that that's not a precedent, because under that reprogramming resolution, the question of the absence of any business unit was not a consideration. In this case, as the speaker, and I quote, "Even if it was proper to create a business unit via Senate resolution, absent any funding in that business unit, nothing can be reprogrammed into it." A business unit is just that, a business unit that is inactive. End quote. And again, I hope that the Legal Counsel in the Senate can sit down with the Legal Counsel in the House and come to an agreement, because that's the only legal opinion that will matter. It doesn't matter, we take a vote, which legal opinion and support, it boils down to the House and the Senate sitting down, because again, I respectfully ask for everyone's support to move this right away for our retirees. They are waiting, they have been waiting, and this back and forth between the Senate and the House is not really doing any help at this time. Sido's masi, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Manglona. Senator Santos, recognize.
Thank you. And this is for the main motion for the adoption of this Senate joint resolution, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And so, Mr. President and members, as we are fully aware, both the Senate and the House have passed and submitted their version on how to best proceed with allocating funding for our retirees' bonuses. have passed and submitted their version on how to best proceed with allocating funding for retirees' bonuses. However, each time, one house will disagree. And so because we have previously acted on a similar Senate Joint Resolution as the one before us, Senate Joint Resolution twenty-two the zero nine, that our House counterpart did not acted on. I'm not optimistic, as Senator Malonia echoed, that the House would entertain the same. The House has repeatedly raised some concerns. This afternoon, the information that was shared to us by the Secretary of Finance is in response to your claim, Mr. President, which information has not been shared with the House of Representatives. And as a result, and I echo again, Mr. Senator Malonia's um appeal to you, Mr. President, the Senate members, including our our Senate legal counsel, to sit down with the House counterpart under legal counsel and come up with a version that is amicable to both houses. Let us not continue to prolong this unnecessary delay as this is a pressing and urgent matter for both houses of the legislature. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Santos. Any other member in the recognize chairman, Senator Vico?
Are we delivering on the resolution?
Yes, under discussion right now for the main motion before.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I have no problem with uh House Bill twenty-one, House twenty-two, that's ninety-one. It's the one. As a matter of fact, this bill was pre was preconceived already with a conference committee CC one. And it looks like whoever did this, they wanna shove everything down our throat to agree with their refunderance of CC one. I am not against that, Mr. President. However, I have written a short note here that removing eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars from MVA out of the three point one million for FY twenty-two budget, there was no discussion with MVA director and our board of director. Was never discussed whether the amount of eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand that will be taken out from MVA will balance and that the balance sum of deducting eight hundred fifty-eight thousand will will not cripple the activities of MVA and operation provided and and to continue to write program financial assistance to their respective municipalities for continuous promotion and maintenance of their respective municipalities to promote their tourist industry and all maintenance of tourist site. And out of this three point million annual budget, Mr. President and colleague, one point one million is being funded by ARPA. MVA has already incurred seven hundred and seventy-one thousand for personal and no other costs. And the remaining of this for the remaining of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, if further reduced, MVA will will be left with one hundred and sixty thousand for all others for the remaining of the fiscal year and not excluding the personal costs. So if we are to strengthen our revitalization of tourism, why are we killing the very industry or the very uh agency that provide us the opportunity for economic growth and enhancement? Taking away from MVA to fund a retirement when they are simply another way of doing so without burdening the operation of the Mariners Visitors Bureau, we can enhance this. But all I see here is a political fostering. We can do this from the get-go had politics is not being played as prostitutes. So it is a political issue. And I am so sad that our members from the Senate, you know, are embracing the House action and not their own counterpart. What the hell is going on with these leaders and and Senate members? I thought that we're in together so that we can work with our counterpart and not to, you know, uh try to burden your members in the Senate by trying to play a political fostering. So this is the only thing, Mr. President, that I will support Senate Joint Resolution twenty-two dash nine due to the fact that MVA operation, maintenance of the facilities for the three respective island will be crippled and giving one hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the remaining of the six month before the fiscal year ends. What does the municipality expect to do in promoting their annual activities and the maintenance of our tourist site that brings our people here because of the cleanliness and the beautification of its respective island? Stop, let's uh let's stop this issue as to who's gonna get the credit. It's not about credit here. It's about doing the right thing the right way. And if this is has been done in the past, why can we not do it today? Simple. Now, if further disagreement, that's why there's a judicial branch to review the action if it's reviewable by the judicial branch. Thank you, Mr. President.
This is Massey, Senator Hokuk. I recognize Senator Frank Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President, in line with Chairman Hokuk. The Secretary of Finance make it very clear that this one, this issue, the twenty-two point six, does not require new appropriation. Why are we trying to jeopardize the municipality's funding under MVA? Yes, the chairman is correct. It will jeopardize all the function and the promotion of MVA as well as the municipality's function to pursue with all programs that requires to to the municipality to continue to uh to serve our people and our visitors. I don't know why we're talking about appropriation. It's very clear. The person that is monitoring the funding is here telling us that this one does not require new appropriation to to address the two point six. All we have to do is just approve the request of the administration for that particular funding, and the retiree will receive their their bonuses. But like what the chairman said, even me, I don't wanna get any credit. I don't need credit as long as the the retiree receive their their bonuses. It does not require appropriation, new appropriation. So I don't know why they are keep barking about we have to take this and take that and give it to the retirees from that from like the chairman said from the get-go. We're the first body of the legislature that pushed for the five hundred dollars. They came out with the House resolution, and not only that, they 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 they're trying to to tell the department or or reprogram departments uh uh funds that is already been budgeted. I don't know if the legislature is authorized to reprogram any department's money when we already give them. To my understanding, I'm not a lawyer. But once you give money to the department, the department is the only one that can request for reprogramming. We cannot request or put on on any resolution or legislation that we can reprogram anybody's money. So I don't know who's telling the truth here. We're not delaying this. We're pushing this from the start. They did not agree to our resolution. So they they came up with a resolution that we will program somebody's uh department's funding. I don't think that's appropriate. That's the reason why we don't we don't agree with the House resolution. And not only that, again, I will repeat, the secretaries right on front of us telling us that we don't need appropriation on this. I know that we're not authorized, the Senate are not not authorized to initiate appropriation. But we only giving the governor, providing government support according to what the trustee lighting and the and Attorney General requests that it should go this route. So again, Mr. President, thank you, and the secretary, thank you for that no very clear clarification of we don't need no new appropriation for this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator Cruz, floor.
Um but I would like to say just a few minutes, uh just to bring you guys in the timeline, no? Uh the importantina Debbie Zautoni mene ekungo gini zani mangai gi gini. No matungusisata iniuka si secretaries and si Antonet and the members ya. Na talza diskuidu gini gi Senate put bandan aturidat ni peretanagwa haji pubenizi ni i bndmizu bonus. December fourteen, twenty twenty-one, i gbenno mangi kata paraguahu zan si Speaker Velagomis pudistina na bonus. December fourteen, December fifteen, i Senate ma adopta Joint Resolution twenty-two oh five ni puma aturisa izuna pude. December fifteen, ah, January fourth, ma prefile gi House appropriation bill ni puma puma amen da. And apatis ti na namandu ipuma patsa izuni MVA funds. Best Gi January twelve, twenty twenty-two, ma introdusi yaktu gi gi sempapa naguma zamapa sah. Best Gi January fourteen, minus dos dias, ma transmiti ulu gi Senate. Best Gi February, dia dos. In pasa gi Senate zain increase ulu ginen five hundred to one thousand sa in lia nasinya hakadga. Yeturidatnya governor. Increase ulu gi five hundred. Todu duan mi gi Senate dot kintodu zi pemalusan ni kumokontra paukoo. Unanimous, one thousand dollars. Endakopapa muna rasonen nai pude di gbenno uno sentu sentu sa. Giza gbenno. Stigi pule mota gini alun napisu gi lislaturen melagun mangobeno melagun manlutenegomena melagun mansecretary of finance. Melagun manlegature, melagun manwes. Gaigista gini si secretary Dave, gaigis Antonet. Stigi share it wrong. Oi tiwe egunno haji purutuli credito as a matter of fact. Chulisti Senate Joint Resolution Papa then pegah House Joint Resolution. Then pasa gupa. Then nantransmit marga minfansesungis arde, zan binadopta. Zaki gini nigimela gumi zu. Ni kumokontrasti, best chulie i Senate Joint Resolution then pegah House Joint Resolution. Sestastiti ostan, si gitama ne gandun bolan maseng. Best spring ke, mandai Senate napabipatsa MVA. Gaigipaukoo, kantidan tauta, paukunore. Ne antinyan zani publikun tinyan. Ma sponsor MVA. Pika Festival, tesa mizuda i Pika Festival. Todu bisita ginen sienema. Intermentik waha memberi uha House roki manma fota Papa gi Pika Festival. Tesa mizuna pata sigi, nunan pubenizi salapri MVA. Dokta vasigima na. Bastas ti pata vasigima nasongni haji ga iso. Sa is Senate istila leadership distutun, zan istapago, zan istaparesempit, puse pota i thais. Talza ngungu gema Papa gi House manman introdusi yaktu after mano di patanalala ikun nyata, dapata sedbi twenty-five percent. Ni ngungu mantinani unoni media. Zai hope, na ta ekukis ti. Then namjuni managang. Then cekin penyu, listakakalum inebuna fiscal year, talza two million. Malomo, putu merendu maranas. Twenty-five percent, the tune of thirty million dollars, is on the hook. Stigi, Debbie tapi kurahit, ai utu bandan election, estate tauta matuwa. Haji, postura zam taza figura, matuwa. Tesa hu, I advise against appointing conference committee because the MVA funds is on the hook. I will not under my watch. I will not frustrate MVA. Siya palu secretary Attali, fifty million dollars, mutumas, gyalu executive brands. Ten percent of fifty million is five million, two point six are panissi sita. Adopters, zan me joint resolution, mantisamizu, chulidu, then pegah House Joint Resolution. Floor, clerk, hold the rock.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Dilong Guerrero?
Yes, with reservation.
Is that a yes with reservation? Senator Hokuk? Senator King Neighbors? Senator Malonia?
Yes, with reservation.
Senator Piriguat? Senator Sablon?
Hungan.
Senator Santos?
Yes, with reservation.
Mr. President?
Hungan.
Mr. President, all nine members voting yes.
With nine members, voting yes and three reservation, yet voting yes. The Senate Joint Resolution number twenty-two oh nine hereby is adopted in the Senate. Any other items on your calendar?
No.
Thank you. Under petitions, memorials, and miscellaneous and communications?
Um, one moment, Mr. President. Oh, no, we're gonna, we're not.
We're good? Under cue?
Uh we have only one, Mr. President. Twenty-two dash eighty-two.
Thank you. Announcements? First of all, I would like to, for those that are here, the visitors that are here, thank you, Senator Sanclos, for joining us this afternoon. Um the mayor and the people of Tinian and the leadership inviting uh on beginning uh tomorrow, Friday and Saturday to this signature event, the magnificent event that the mayor of Tinian is hosting every year. So I invite everyone that are here and the ones that are appearing in the in the Zoom to please visit the island of Tinian, a few hours, then leave, no presentation. Uh I do have, uh would like to uh go on record to appoint Senate members uh to the Special Committee on Impeachment Hearing and Referral of House Resolution twenty-two fourteen uh based on my authority as the presiding officer creating a special committee, and that consists of Senator Carl King Neighbors, who's the chairman, Senator Justo Kituga, vice, Senator Francisco Q Cruz, Senator Victor Bijokuk, and Senator Teresita E Santos. I will be issuing the memo accordingly for your perusal. So with that, uh floor leader, for the proper motion offer, motion for adjournment?
Thank you, Mr. President, and this time I'd like to offer a motion to adjourn today's Senate session, subject to the call of the president.
So the motion offered by the floor leader for adjournment, subject to the call, has been seconded. All those in favor to adjourn this Senate session, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. The Senate session stands adjourned, subject to the call. Thank you.